I'd like to bring the August meeting of the Interboro School Board of -- School Directors Meeting, sorry. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Mrs. Krajewski?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Mrs. Krajewski, the invocation, please, and pledge.
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Krajewski, do we have any public comments to begin the meeting?
No, Mrs. Hager, we do not.
Let's move to motion 3.1, please.
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors, held on July 16, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Serini, the Solicitor's report, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager, good evening. This month, our firm has been working on contract review of various contracts, including the new student information system. We've conducted some policy review and also consultation on various personnel issues.
Thank you. Can we move to motion 5.1, Mrs. Krajewski?
Motion that the attached Treasurers' Report for the month ending July 31, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 5.2, please.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $10,621,332.70 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight to zero. Any correspondence, Mrs. Krajewski?
No, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you. The committee report, Mr. Eckert was away on business, so I'll give the report for from Monday, August 4th. The Finance Committee did not meet. All of our business was in the General Business Operations Meeting. We reviewed the financial payment for the new student information system. Dr. Eckert reviewed it with us, and as Mrs. Serini said, that their office is reviewing it, it is a motion on the board for us to move ahead with that. So we will begin implementing that this year. Mr. Woolhoff gave a summer project update. We're very pleased that our projects have been completed a little bit early. The board will be taking tours next week of the building. So we thank Mr. Woolhoff for his department, his oversight, and for our employees who have done an outstanding job getting our schools back together. So we thank you. We also received a report on the new mission, Shared Values Vision Statement, from Dr. Ekman. That is also on the agenda this evening for a first reading. It's part of Mrs. Riley's plan for the school district for the coming year, the themes that we'll be most engaged in. Mrs. Riley also gave an update from our kindergarten to first grade. It was a project that we undertook this year to ensure that our students are residents, and that has been very successful. We also have first readings, several first readings of our policy. We're nearing completion in our total review of policy, so we're happy with that. And that concludes my report. Mrs. Floyd, legislative update.
We didn't have any meetings this month. We'll resume in September. However, there's a lot going, not a lot going on. The Senate and the House are on vacation, but there's a lot of going back and forth, trying to come up with the pension reform, and more to come as we get closer to the election, because that's what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir Adams?
No, as there was no meeting with Delaware County Community College until November, I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. De Batista?
Yes. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on August 6, 2014. Some quick highlights, they approved a partnership between DCIU Head Start and Interboro School District to track the progress of Head Start children, provide registration dates annually, assist with advertising services within the district, and outline parameters of schools in the community from May 31, 2014 through May 30, 2015. They welcomed Mr. Ron Contrady, the new principal of the Aston Campus of the Delaware County Technical School, effective August 6, 2014. The expansion of the Delaware County Technical School is still status quo. A plan has been submitted to the Commissioners of Aston, so they're just still waiting for a response to that, but most likely it won't be a good one. The next Board of Directors' Meeting will be held on September 3, 2014. This probably will be my last report, if not second-to-last report, as I had to resign from the IU just because of family obligations, and you'll see there's a motion on the agenda that Mr. Harris, I'm sure, will all approve for him. He will be our representative at the IU. So I wish him well. I think he'll be a great fit for that board. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. De Batista. The board thanks you for your service as our IU representative. Can we move to page two, Personnel, Motion Eight, Mrs. Krajewski?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two, ending on page nine.
It's been moved and seconded. Just to refresh the public's memory, this is always a big month for Personnel, August, as we begin the school year. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mrs. De Batista?
The retirement is included in this motion, correct?
Correct. Yes, it is.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Redding, Mr. Ricketts, and Mrs. Komet for their years of service to the Interboro School District, and I wish them well in their retirement. However, I would be remiss if I didn't just say a few words, if you could just bear with me, regarding Mr. Ricketts, because he is one of our faves at Tinicum. So I'll just read some words that kind of sums up how Tinicum School, the community, and myself as a parent feels about Mr. Ricketts. Mr. Ricketts was a principal who came to Tinicum for many years solely because he loved our kids. He was loved by everyone who came in contact with him. He had such an impact on the success of our elementary students, and Mr. Fanning has already received multiple calls from crying parents wishing him well and asking him not to leave. He was the guy not only who helped you with math, but would repair eyeglasses, sew your ripped bookbag, and hook you up with the best snacks during PSSAs. To say he will be missed is an understatement. So we just, on behalf of Tinicum Elementary School, we want to wish Mr. Ricketts well. We will think of him often and most definitely fondly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De Batista. Any other comments on motion eight?
Yes, comment.
Mrs. Floyd?
I also would like to comment on the three people that are retiring. Unfortunately, I didn't know Mr. Ricketts well at all, but Jackie Redding and Carolyn Komet, I've known for many, many years, and they're not just good employees, they're good parents, they're good community people, and they're going to be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion nine, Mrs. Krajewski?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed, beginning on page nine, ending on page 10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about motion nine from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 10, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Pupil Services and Special Education be approved as listed, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 11, please.
Motion that the following item from the Office of Finance be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members on this motion, which deals with our yearly bus lease? We're in a multi-year bus leasing program, and this is our obligation for the year. Hearing no further questions or comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 12, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached invoices from PSBA for the 2014-2015 school year as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on motion 12? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight point zero.
Mrs., Madam President?
Mr. Razzie?
Sorry. Point of order, it appears I forgot to mention something. The motion 13, before we have that, could we have, could I propose a motion 13A, which would be to accept the resignation of Deb De Batista as the Interboro School District Representative to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit?
Good catch, thank you. So we would include this new motion, which we would have to have any public comment. The motion is to accept the resignation of Mrs. De Batista as our representative to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Seconded by Mrs.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. It's seconded. Public comment? Hearing no, public comment?
I got it. Good meeting.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve or accept the resignation of Deborah De Batista as the Interboro School District Representative to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Second.
With regret.
Second, with regret.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members?
Madam President, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Certainly. Ms. Caldwell?
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. We move on to motion 13.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve Edward Harris as the Interboro School District Representative to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, with pleasure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for accepting this position. Motion 14, Mrs. Krajewski?
I'm going to apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce this person's name, because I only ever knew him as Mr. Meck. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve to reclassify Anthony Macarello from social studies teacher at the high school to athletic director district-wide, effective August 25, 2014, at an annual salary of $60,769. The terms and conditions of the manager's coordinators' compensation plan will apply to Mr. Macarello upon reclassification.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. As I stated at the meeting the other night, and at the GBO meeting as well, I cannot support this motion. I can't support the whole concept of this motion and what is left out of this motion. The fact of the matter is, I have a question before I give my explanation. Are we an equal-opportunity employer?
Yes, we are.
Okay. With that said, we advertised for an athletic director slash assistant principal, and there were requirements listed for people to apply. There is nothing personal against this individual, and I want that to be emphatically understood. The fact is, is that administration chose to give this individual an interview without having the certification for assistant principal. Because of that, moving forward, things changed. There was bumps in the road all the way up till tonight, earlier this afternoon, actually. And the fact of the matter is, that it has now been changed that this individual is going to be, the position is now only for athletic director. What it doesn't say in this motion is that when this individual completes his certification, there's an understanding, which is not in writing, that he will be reclassified in a year to be the athletic director slash assistant principal. That, to me, is an unfair practice, and that's not being an equal-opportunity employer. We advertised one thing, and we're doing another. We advertised, people came, they had the requirements necessary, and they were turned down. There were people in the district, outside of the district, that may have applied if they knew it was only going to be for athletic director. So I feel that we are tailoring the requirements to the needs of the individual, rather than to the needs of the school district. And I don't like the process. I don't like the inequity that we are presenting, and I don't like the idea that this is possibly, probably, already causing morale issues within our district, within our staff. So I can't support this, and I wish my fellow board members would hear that loud and clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Any other comments or questions?
Comment?
Mrs. De Batista?
As issues were raised, you know, as always, we have questions, but I feel confident that those questions were answered for me. You know, I think we need to be careful when we use words such as unfair hiring practices and equal opportunity. Employment law is very specific about what is discrimination and what is unfair hiring practices. And an employer has the right to adjust the job description as they see fit. We, as a district, if we found the candidate that we think is the right fit for not only our district, but in the position, we have the right to tailor that job description. Now, did Mr. Meck maybe have a leg up because he was an internal candidate? Absolutely, and that would happen wherever you worked. We know his work ethic, we know what he stands for, we know what kind of teacher he was. But that could have also been a disadvantage for him, because we also know any weaknesses that he may have. So in my mind, the fact that Mr. Macarello took the initiative to say, hey, will you interview me, I think is a great quality in an athletic director, as a leader in our district. So when he had that interview, and as he went through the process, he apparently, to the administration and the hiring committee, stood out as the most, that the best candidate, and sometimes a qualified candidate, it isn't always the best candidate. So with that being said, yes, maybe some adjustments were made. However, I think questioning the integrity of the superintendent and all the people, and there were many people involved in the hiring process, is unfair, because I respect the process and the people that were involved in that. Therefore, I support Mr. Meck, I support our superintendent, and I support everyone involved who recommended him for this position. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. De Batista. Any other questions or comments?
Madam President?
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you. Hearing both my colleagues just speak, I'd feel remiss if I didn't make a couple of quick comments. I think they're both have interesting perspectives on how this happened and what had happened, and I know Mrs. De Batista hasn't been on the board that long, and she attended a lot of meetings and saw a lot of what we went through in the hiring practices of this district that divided the board. And I feel in the last two years, we've come a long way and really changed things for the better. And unfortunately, I think this situation has brought us back to a lot of those old practices. And while I respectfully disagree with her as to the employment law implications that she made, I agree that the management has the right to change what their qualifications are. But if we're going to do that, everybody should have the same opportunity. If now qualifications don't matter and anybody can apply, we've just told everybody, when the job comes up and you don't meet those qualifications, don't worry about it, just apply, and if we like you better than the people that are qualified, we might interview you. It's arbitrary, it's compresious, it goes against everything that we've set out to do and the corrections we've made in the HR Department. Along the way, I just think we stumbled on this one, and I don't think we followed our own policy. We were told we were going to have two candidates at the end, we only ended up with one. So I can certainly understand Mrs. Floyd's frustration, and there is always a, I think in the last, especially in the last year, there is always a will of this board to support the superintendent and the HR director and the recommendations. I don't disagree with that, but in this situation, I can't. The process was just too arbitrary, it was too different than what we're used to, and I think it sets us up for future problems. And I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Ms. De Batista, and therefore, I will not be supporting this motion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Razzie. Any other board members?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
I had voiced my opinion on this before. It's not the candidate that I have a problem with, it's the process, and that's why you will not have my support as well.
Thank you. No other comments or questions? Ms. Caldwell, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
No.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion carries five-three. Motion 15, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies in the categories of programs, pupils, and operations, as listed, beginning on page 11, ending on page 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yeah, I would like to bring it to the parents' attention, as well as the students' attention, the policy 222, tobacco, and is there another one? Anyway, in regards to, the policy reads, no possession of tobacco or anything, you know, of that sort. And so it's not just a matter of getting caught, it's a matter of carrying it on their bodies. So I think people should read the student handbook, which I would like to have a copy of, as well as the policy, so that if their student does get caught and penalized, this is why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries eight zero. Any old business before the board? New business? Mrs. Riley?
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Hager. My first comment for this evening is that I would like to welcome and congratulate all of our new hires to the district. As you can see from the agenda, we have many new people joining us this year. I would like to thank the administrative team and the many teachers who volunteered their time to assist us with the many rounds of interviews that were held this summer. We were all very busy. I'd like to recognize Dave Criscola for leading the team and taking care of all of these, the process this summer. So thank you, Dave. I would also like to welcome Tony Meck to the position of athletic director. He went through what I believe is a rather rigorous interview process with teachers, administrators, and we believe that he was the best candidate for the position. So I'd like to welcome him. He brings 10 years of quality teaching experience in our social studies department. He's been a coach for many years here in the district, and I believe he will be an asset. So I thank you for that. If you check out the website, Interboro School District now has an app for your phone where you can access all of our information. It's ready for the iPhone, but not yet for smartphones. So if you give that about a week or two, it should be ready. I tried to log into it, and it's very nice. So please check that out on the website. I would also like to recognize our maintenance and custodial staff, who have been working very, very hard to get the buildings ready. We had some major projects going on this summer, including the two major HVAC renovation projects at Norwood and Tinicum. The buildings are done ahead of time, the air conditioning and heating is running well, and I know everyone's excited to get back and experience the cool air in the classrooms. I'd also like to thank the maintenance, excuse me, the technology department. Again, it's another area where we've had a lot of work going on over the summer. We've put in new laptops for all teachers, and they've been very busy with many new things. So I want to thank them for all of their time and energy, and we look forward to the year starting. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Any other board members?
Comment?
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge also the custodial staff, Mr. Woolhoff, the Director of the Maintenance and Custodial Staff. They did an amazing job this year, these projects that got completed. A lot of us saw them in the beginning stages and couldn't believe that they were going to come together, but George and his staff really pulled it off. They got things done. The major air conditioning upgrade at the Tinicum School and the Norwood School went off without a hitch. I was able with Superintendent Riley and President Hager to tour the Tinicum School as it was wrapping up, and it's amazing to see what was done down there. So I just want to thank George and his staff for pulling that off and finally getting the Tinicum School air conditioned. So I know there's a lot of appreciative residents down there in Tinicum, and a lot of appreciative board members, they don't have to hear the gripes of the Tinicum residents how they send the most money to the district and don't even have an air conditioning school. So we've been trying to do that for years, George, so thank you for heading that up.
We can't forget Norwood either, Mr. Razzie.
And Norwood. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hager. Norwood had many problems, and now that they are addressed, we hope that their clean air and their new air conditioning starts the school year outright. So thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board, we wish our employees who are leaving us for retirement a happy retirement, and welcome our new members to the Interboro School District. On Monday, September 8th--
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I have a comment.
Mrs. Floyd, go ahead.
Yes. I would like to thank the Friends of Interboro that this evening gave all the board members a nice T-shirt, and this is to promote their organization. And anybody that's an alumni has on the back that recognizing us as Buck alumni. Their organization is based in community pride, their mission is to foster fellowship among the alumni in the Interboro community by awarding scholarships, as well as supporting the Interboro community. And there's a list of all the different things that they have done in the past-- And there's a list of all the different things that they have done in the past year or two. So I'd like to thank them for their efforts, as well as the nice little gift they gave to the board. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. To the students out there, if you happen to be watching, you don't have very much time to finish your summer reading and your math projects and anything else that was assigned to you over the summer. It's over. It's days away, so please get on it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mrs. Hager.
Mr. Evans?
Just wanted to echo everyone's sentiments about the Mr. Woolhoff staff and all that they've accomplished over the summertime, and even while they're doing that, they're still kind enough to accommodate the marching band practice and have us in their kitchen, have us in their ice machine and in the way, and lend a hand for us as well. So I wanted to thank Mr. Woolhoff and his staff. They're always very accommodating, and they did do a seemingly insurmountable amount of work this year that hopefully we'll get a look at on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Right now, the building, this building looks great. It's the only one I've been in so far, and I've watched the men and women of his staff working tirelessly to get it done. So thank you very much, sir. I also wanted to mention real quick that I'm going to be sad to see Mr. Frank DeLeo leave Norwood School. It was a dead giveaway when a couple of his students were glad to see him leave. So that means he must have been doing a good job. I really appreciated his attitude and philosophy towards student life and discipline, and I will miss him as well, and I wanted to thank him for his service. Hey, that's it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Eckert?
I also would like to add my two cents to the two projects over the summer. As one who has been involved in many projects outside in my regular employment, to bring one project of air conditioning into a district and have it completed on time would be a milestone and an achievement. But to be able to bring two buildings in on schedule and have the school year start uninterrupted, the staff does need it. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Woolhoff, for your job well done, along with your staff, because not only did they bring the projects in, the buildings are also prepared and ready for the school year. So a lot of scheduling and planning and doing things differently this year to accommodate both of those projects. It is a job well done, and thank you. I'm going to add my other beef in here. Ninth graders, freshmen, incoming freshmen, please do not forget, we had a lot of conversation in the springtime about the Keystone exams. Your clock has started. Please remember that. The only reason I keep bringing this up, because I know four years from now, there will be some parent in the superintendent's office wondering why their child is not graduating. Now is the time to start to think about that. Do not wait four years from now and worry about what you did on your Keystone exam. Now is the time to prepare for that. I also would like to congratulate Mr. Mack on his new appointment as athletic director. Yes, there is some disagreement, but I do believe that the process has been followed correctly. Anybody has an opportunity to apply for any job, go for it. That's the only way that you improve. We have corporate leaders out there that have as little as a high school education. Some of our early corporate leaders have only had elementary school. If they waited for somebody to turn around and just wait for them, this country would not be where it is. If you want something, please go after it. With that, thank you very much.
Any else? On Monday, September 8, 2014, a finance meeting with the GBO immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the administration building. The next work session of the Inneboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, September 15, 2014, at 6:30 PM. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Inneboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the Inneboro High School on Wednesday, September 17, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.